Almost right at six o'clock. Uh, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. We call this meeting, daughter, if you will stand with me. In the silence, I wish you would, uh, if you would still remember the Kimball family. They're still grieving and we just, as a school system and as a community, still remember, remember them in our daily prayers. So if you would, just bow with me for a moment. Several please.
Play allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll please.
Ms. Brown, here. Mr. Greaver?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
And Mr. Long.
Here. First of all, I'd like to welcome our two new members for Johnson County Board of Education, Mr. Walker and Ms. Brown. You're welcome, you're welcome too. It's good to have you on board with us. Um, item number three, recognition measures, delegation participation.
Yes, and, um, we sent letters out to all of our retirees and I don't think any of them are here. But we did receive word that a few of them wasn't coming, but I would like to go ahead and read about them and they'll all get a certificate. Um, Ms. Kim Franklin worked many years with the Johnson County Schools. She traveled from school to school teaching children the joy of music and putting on many years of programs for our parents. The students and teachers will miss her music talent after thirty years of service to our school. Dr. Sherry Long became an employee in August of nineteen ninety-three. She has held many different titles in our school system, with the last, of course, is getting her doctorate degree. She has taught and been an administrator at several different schools to which she was a big asset for each of them. We wish her the best in all her retirement and know she will enjoy her new beautiful granddaughter Lucy. She has thirty-two years of service. Ms. Paula Stewart started with us in two thousand and four. Everyone loves Ms. Paula and she always knew what to say to them to make them feel better. Her passion for children is over the top and Mountain City Elementary was so lucky to have her for so many years. She will be missed by many. She retired in December with twenty years of service. Mr. Rick Wilson came to us as an act teacher. He then found that he wanted to be our football coach and he made his way over to being a gym coach from the act department. He did a wonderful job, the kids loved him, he was a wonderful football coach, and he had five years of service with the school. Uh, we had some assistants that have retired. Mr. Ms. Brenda Rourke started in twenty fifteen as an assistant and has been an amazing person to help our children. She is willing to help with whatever is necessary and needs to be done. She has worked in a couple of different schools over the years and she had ten years of service. We had a few bus drivers. Uh, Mr. Rick Kerr was a bus driver with us since August of twenty nineteen. He came to us from working, uh, others in other state jobs. He was someone that always has a smile on his face and loved his jo- loved his job as transporting our children and they loved him. He retired with five years in December and he is now work- back working part-time for us, subbing. Uh, Mr. Dave Smiley came to us in twenty fourteen with lots of talent. There is nothing that he couldn't do or nothing that he didn't know or wasn't willing to figure out. He was a hard worker, always willing to go an extra mile to help anyone in any way that he could. We wish him the best in his retirement. He had ten years of service in our maintenance department. And Mr. Johnny Stansberry started in twenty nineteen. At first you may think Johnny is very quiet when you meet him, but he is very sweet, helpful, respectful, and many other words we can describe him as. Johnny, much like David, is someone that is always there to get anything done that is asked of him and go the extra mile. Both of these will be greatly missed in our maintenance department and our bus garage staff. We wish them all a happy retirement. Johnny had six years of service with the school. And then something I know the school boards always likes to hear, we had eight, um, employees retire with a total years of experience of a hundred and eighteen years.
Wow.
So thank you all for your support and your service to our students.
Wow, okay. And Johnson County Parents Coalition.
Um, yeah, so due to the scheduling changes of this meeting, we were not able to meet tonight, so we'll be meeting Thursday. So I'll get, if there's any updates from the parents, I'll get that to you guys next month. The only other update that I have, it's really exciting, we have started our research for the third grade retention and we'll be starting the drafting on that in November. And I will be going to Nashville to speak on that.
And Julia's on with us.
Yes, but I have her.
You have her for, alright.
And before we get started, um, and I'll tell you where she's at in just a second, but I do want to introduce Mr. Gavin Kerr. He is our junior rep and, um, Julia won't be here this month or next month. So next month, he's going to sit up here with us and, and read what she has to write, but welcome Gavin, he'll be with us for two years. And she does have a PowerPoint for us. Um, she just wanted to let everyone know, um, she apologizes for not being here. Since it is her first meeting, I am currently eight hours away being housed at the University of Tennessee at Martin for the twenty twenty-five Tennessee Governor's School for the Agricultural Sciences, which is a great honor.
Very good excuse.
Very good excuse, very good excuse. Um, these are some pictures that have sub- been submitted to her of activities so far this summer from students. Um, FFA will continue to have their Friday workdays every Friday from eight-thirty to twelve at the Aqua Center. All members are invited to come and help keep the facility clean and running. The JCHS cheerleaders are hosting a youth cheer camp for grades one through eight. This will be taking place July twenty-third through the twenty-fifth from twelve to four P M. This month is National June Dairy Month. This year's dairy chair is Emma Litham. Emma will be set up at the farmer's market and various town events with some fun activities for those of all ages. We would also like to say good luck to the horse judging team who will be competing at the state contest on June sixteenth. The JCHS football team will be hosting a yo- a youth camp for grades one through eight on June sixteenth, seventeenth, and nineteenth from six to nine each night. We want to congratulate Hannah Johnson for placing second in the state for plu- pluobotomy. She has qualified for the national competition, we are very proud of her. The JCHS volleyball team will be hosting a youth camp on June sixteenth through the eighteenth. Upcoming third through fifth graders will be from nine to one and upcoming sixth through eighth will be from twelve to three. The JCHS band will be having their annual band camp on July twenty-first through twenty-fifth. This is for all current band members. And then here are some important dates to remember. Freshman kickoff will be on July thirtieth and the first half day will be August the fourth. And she says thank you.
Good report. Alright, item number five, elect vice chairman. So the floor is now open for nomination, vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to elect Chad Group to be vice chair.
Have a motion on the floor for Chad Group. Any other nominations? Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Call roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes. We have a vice chairman?
Congratulations.
Mr. Greaver? They have to take over pretty quick, I don't know. Item number six, approval of the agenda. Yeah, we didn't touch on that one when we talked earlier.
That'd be the time to do it.
Yeah, we, we, uh, for years we didn't do this. Uh, don't know why, but we have to approve the agenda that we're doing tonight. Uh, it has to be approved, so, and we didn't touch on this earlier when we were talking about it. So we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have any discussion? Not call roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes. Consent agenda? Is there anything on there you'd like to pull off and look at separately? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Actually, do we need to add something there as far as authorizing the gearing cleanups to give you the play that you are needing through Wednesday? Are we gonna add that on there?
You need to work that.
Actually, I mean, basically, you're authorizing the director of schools and the finance director to submit to the director council budget any, any court amendment through closer business next Wednesday.
Did you get that? That doesn't need to be a standalone, no.
Alright, we'll do it with this.
Okay. Get it, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda without addition?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Alright, Mr. Walker, second. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes. Item number eight, approve the T S S E membership dues for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six.
This is a part of the small schools lawsuit that's been going on since the late eighties and we've always been a part of that. This is where, uh, rural systems fought to have equitable salaries across the state, because back then it was not. We still can send, continue to receive money for that, that's what the dues sort of go for to help fight with that lawsuit so we can continue to be equitable across the state. Uh, last year we received two hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars for being a part of this. This is above what T S A gives us, so we, we always have this money coming in every year. I mean, it is a great benefit for rural systems and I know all the rural systems in first are a part of this lawsuit.
What is our, what do we put in it?
What do we put in it? How much was the?
Twenty-four sixty, looks like our portion after Pearson pays theirs.
Yeah.
Twenty-four sixty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we do, uh, send Pearson a bill for that as well.
Okay. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Walker?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Call roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes. Approve a three-year contract with Code H S for computer science curriculum for JCHS and J C M P S.
Yes, this is, uh, we had talked about this a little bit in the work session. This is the curriculum that we use for the required computer science class that we have to teach at the middle school and the high school. It is mandated by the state to have this course, yet they did not provide a curriculum. So this is the curriculum they used last year, um, the teachers, this is the curriculum they wanted to continue with. They also get fee offerings for this curriculum through them and, uh, they did give us a better deal if we would do a three-year contract.
Okay.
And we already have this budgeted in?
Yes.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Brown, a motion?
I'll second.
And Mr. Walker, second. Have any further discussion? Call roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes. Item number eleven.
Ten.
Ten, one of them is ten, I do that all the time. Approve member hand of understanding between Johnson County Board of Education, Frontier Health to provide beha- behavioral health counseling services.
Uh, this is just an M O U we have every year, uh, between us and Frontier Health and they currently are providing us three behavioral health counselors, one that serves the hill, middle school and high school, uh, one that serves doe, and one that serves Rome Creek.
Same as well?
Yes. And there is no fee. Yep.
Frontier Health does a good job.
They do.
They do a fantastic job. Chairman? I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, do we have any other discussion? No discussion, uh, call roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes. Item number eleven, approve Stellar Therapy Services LLC to provide administrative and billing services for the school nursing Medicaid reimbursement program Johnson County Schools.
And, um, again, this is, uh, the program that we use for those students that are on Medicare, Medicaid, that need additional services through our nurses, maybe a catheter change, insulin shots, and it's just, we get a portion of that fact that goes into our nursing program. And we have done this for years.
I'll make a motion that we approve this agreement with Stellar Therapy Services for the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Actually fiscal year is what it follows you on, one to June thirty.
We got a motion? Should I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Have any further discussion? Call roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes. Item number twelve, first reading of policy committee recommendations for policy six-two-zero-zero attendance. Uh, will allow parents to submit three notes for excused absen- absences. Uh, number two, five unexcused tardies dismissal will be treated as one excused absence. And then policy four-point-six-zero grading system, change the grading scale to reflect a K through twelve policy. Policy six-point-two-three-one-two, use of personal communication devices and electronic devices. Senate Bill eight-nine-seven and House Bill nine-three-two requires the school board have a policy prohibiting cell phone during instructional time.
Um, and again, this is first reading, so we'll have second reading in July for approval. Uh, these policies were brought to us, um, with concerns of the parent coalition. I think actually the one that addressed the parent notes and the principals had done that. Um, Mr. Osborne has taken over attendance for Ms. Miller who retired last year and has done a wonderful job. So he actually took suggestions from principals and what the parent coalition had shared and sort of, and making sure we're legal and following the law and had done changes to that attendance policy. Um, do y'all have any specific questions about that policy? He's, him and myself are both happy to answer it. Elijah, do you want to add anything?
I also wanted to add that it's not on the public agenda, but it is on your OS packet. I believe there is a third change. Um, reading excuses submitted by parent or student must be the original, so understand we won't accept, uh, reproductions or copies essentially. And I think probably the reasoning is clear, but we're running into a couple issues this year with, uh, altered or forged in some cases. So we just want to cut that off at the head instead of trying to run, run down every, every excuse pretty much.
Yeah, that makes sense. Uh, I just have a question there, cause it's been asked me, what? If, if half a day is late and a minute's late, is there, could there be a?
So if a student is abs- if a student is present for the full day, they're counted as present right now. Um, but like you said, if they leave a minute after they've been there for a full day, right now there's no repercussions whatsoever. So I think what you're getting at is, could we, could we put it in there where it has to add up to a half day? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Well, no, I mean, if they come in, if they come in late, if they come in a half a day late, there is a half or half a, or a half a day late. But if they come in a minute late, they're still tardy. They're tardy both times, but one's a half a day and one's a minute.
Wow, and I think what he's getting at, because I had the same question asking me as far as, so somebody's thirty seconds late. How do you justify that as far as somebody coming in at eleven forty-five? And, and at the end of the day, I do agree tardy's tardy, you know, what time the bell rings, get to school. Um, my issue with this and one suggestion I would like to make is the leaving early part. With a little bit of grace there as far as, so let's say, let's say a child has to leave at two o'clock. They've spent the overwhelming majority of the day at school. Would it not be fair to put some grace in there as far as if somebody has to leave at two? That they are counted as the full day and there's not an unexcused absence? As opposed to they come in and then they leave at eleven-thirty, is that a thing of the law?
I think it goes back to what Kevin just said, if we looked at it based on time versus a day.
If, if we, it would be very difficult to word a policy in a way that would allow that without allow, allowing abuse of it. Like a kid in high school missing, leaving early every day and missing their whole fourth period. See, it's different for elementary and high schools.
And that ties in with an example of somebody, with something I gave to somebody as far as if a student, a student shows up every day at nine-thirty and they miss that first class of the day and they do that fifty-eight times during the year.
Sure.
They've missed one-third of that class for an entire year. So, no, that's fair.
Well, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Cause that does, that does happen, especially with student drivers.
Yeah.
Early dismissals, I think, isn't as big of a problem as.
They're late.
As being late, you know, we, like you said, uh, I'm thinking of one particular case. Uh, a girl was absent for first period twenty-three times in one semester and so.
But they were there the entire day.
We looked at her total absences and she had very few total absences because she came in late twenty-three times after first period. So, and, and from a truancy perspective, there was nothing I could do about it because our policy did not specify that we could do something about it for truancy.
Well, what I, what I was, was getting at though, if, if they're, if they're walking down the hall when the bell rings, that's still tardy, but there should be a.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, not some of the schools have a little bit of grace that they show as far as.
But they still gotta go to the office.
I think more.
Here, here they gotta go to the office.
To sign in.
To sign in.
Typically.
So that makes them tardy.
Yes, I, I mean, maybe they shouldn't do this, but speaking of someone who taught last, you know, not this school year, previous school year. In high school at least, if a student was, if I could see him come, walking down the hall, I was not gonna make him go sign in. So you all wanted, if you all wanted to include a stipulation that said, uh, tardy after eight fifteen, I guess we could do that, but I think that's gonna add a lot of work to our, um, to our tenants personnel to be able to track. Okay, I see that this is marked tardy, but this one's not, this is marked tardy, what time, you know.
Well, and what you're gonna do if you do that is then eight fifteen comes the new eight oh five.
Exactly.
So then they're gonna come walking down the hall at eight seventeen and go, I was almost here. No, the bell rang twelve minutes ago.
Yeah, I think it would be very difficult to word a policy to, and I understand what y'all are saying, but I think it would be difficult to word a policy that would allow that without allowing abuse of that.
Because if you move the bar, that, that becomes the new bar.
Well, I, I'd say that, that, you know, where I work, we go by point system. Eight oh, well, I'll go to work at seven o'clock. Seven oh four is a quarter point. After that, it's half point, up until a point.
I assume y'all maybe have some kind of computerized clock.
Well, yeah, because of clock.
And that's right.
All our attendance people are doing this manually.
Yeah.
It'd be very difficult.
Well, and I do think too with, so you have to have five tardies to equal one unexcused absences. And then how many unexcused absences before you get a letter of five?
We send a letter at three, but that's just a notification and then the letter to meet with the principals is five. So if you were just racking up tardies, you'd have to rack up twenty-five before you'd ever have to meet with a principal.
And then at that point, you don't have just a, a random occurrence that slowed you down, you have a habitual pattern.
Okay, that's on clock, problem I have with that. But I'm glad the, the letter for the notes. I didn't agree with this one the first time, cause I was on the board when it, I argued against it at the state level.
Yeah, I remember.
Dr. Sean Cox?
Uh-huh.
Um, Dr. Long and I have worked together and we have a tardy call out that will start next year that if, if a student is tardy, cause some parents may not even know that their child was tardy. So he and I have worked together with Skyward.
And that's more with, to address the high school with the issues with the student drivers?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, cause they do.
That, that's where there's a lot of the issues.
Forty years ago, my mom didn't know.
Yeah.
She didn't know where I was at half the time, or I thought. Or so I thought.
You'd be amazed.
Yeah.
Uh, policy four-point-six-oh-oh, the grading system, uh, last year the state board set the grading scale for nine through twelve that we had to follow. So we, we adapted that policy. K eight at that time wanted to stay with theirs. In meeting with them, they requested if they could follow the same policy that nine-twelve, um, is required to do. So that is the only thing with that change of policy and that came from principals and, and teachers. And then the last one is the use of the cell phones, um, and again, that is state, state law now that we have to have a policy in place that says no phones during instructional time. Um, so our policy just sort of states that, we have done that for K eight. We had a little bit of freedom last year with nine-twelve and we tweaked that a little bit more this year. Uh, students cannot have their phones on whatsoever during the school day. Uh, they can't have them out during instructional time. At the high school, if they're changing classes or in the cafeteria, they are gonna be allowed to, to have them and that's just for this year, they wanna see how that goes. And if that gets to be abusive, then Dr. Long and his staff would like to take that away as well. And that's just the main things with those policies. So you'll have a second reading in July.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. So about attendance policy, I just had one question for, with parents, um, so, how do I word this? So multiple, multiple kids, so, okay, let's say I have a child that has a dentist appointment in Bristol. I don't have family up here, so I have to take all of my kids out of the school to take my child to the dentist. Will that doctor's note for that one child be sufficient to, for all of the children if the dentist will not give tar- uh, notes for the ones that weren't seen?
Don't think in the past have you accepted that for all siblings?
I think, um, I think it's kind of discretion because we do have in the policy that, uh, they, there is in the policy uh, an allowance for illness of a family member for an excused absence. I don't know if that would qualify. Um, sometime, we also allow principal excused absences if, if the principal determines that, hey, there's just no way that this kid could have gotten to school. So I would say, I would say policy-wise, probably not, but in reality, if it's a one-time thing that. if it's a one-time thing, that the principal may excuse that anyway.
Because that is something that's not exactly broadcast, but principals do have some pretty solid discretion.
They have some flexibility in certain things.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to excuse every little thing, but
Right.
if it's a, if it's a really good, you know, emergency situation, or this kid just, there was no way the kid could be here today, for good reason. The principals have some amount of discretion there.
Good job.
I'm just gonna have to kill off the grading every time my kid has to do it. Thank you.
So I'm gonna have a back in my day moment as far as the grading scale. Did this change to this new grading scale pretty much nationwide and just become the new thing? Because with the ninety to one hundred as opposed to ninety-five, one hundred, ninety to ninety-four?
It went closer to the national norm when state, when the state of Tennessee adopted it last year.
So last year was the first year Tennessee picked up, but it had been used elsewhere across the country prior to that.
I remember adjusting it.
We adjusted it ourselves a few years ago.
Well, this pretty well follows like what, say, ETSU does.
Yeah, but, and, and that was a lot of the reasoning, I think, that the state board did, because you have so many dual enrollment AP classes now where you follow that college grading scale. I think that's why they decided to implement that across the state, because, you know, the majority of our kids do take those.
I use this statement with my youngest, D's get degrees. And she had a class that we were very thankful she made a D in it.
Any other questions, small numbers? Item thirteen.
Uh five-year plan update, and this again is your all's five-year plan. Um upon developing the annual budget, staffing needs will be a focus, and that was definitely a focus for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and I, I can tell you, our staff is very appreciative of all that the board did for the budget, so thank you all for that.
Okay. Uh Tina, budget update.
The school department as of today is eighty-six point two percent of appropriations expended in general purpose schools. Seventy-five point eight percent of appropriations expended in federal projects. Seventy-eight point six percent of appropriations expended in central cafeteria. And Head Start, the fiscal year project, is currently eighty-four point four percent of appropriations expended. Um you do have the local option sales tax and property tax collections, but just a couple highlights. Sales tax collections for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year are currently at one million five hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. This is actually up one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars from the same time last year. And that, the fact that we are collecting the half, half a cent could play a big role in that, but it did assist us with our budget, so. And then property tax collections for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year are two million five hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. That's up sixty-seven thousand, fifteen dollars from the same time last year.
So with us spending eighty-six point two of general purpose expenditure, we're gonna have a pretty healthy amount roll over.
Oh, that means a heavy expenditure run.
Okay.
Yeah.
We actually have, we have an assistant payroll. We have eleventh and twelfth payroll for the teachers. We have a middle of the month and the end of the month, so we actually have five pa- five payrolls that come out. And we actually owe one more payment to Connections Academy, which is over two million. So, uh June does
And A C two seven will go up very quick.
Yes, June does play a, a hit on the budget.
Explain to me again, since you're both here, why we have to pay out, why we do two checks? Why we do two checks in June?
So, what we do is we take the ten months in, the ten-month employee, the ten-month teacher. But we desire, divide that salary into twelve checks, and that way it allows the teachers to get two checks in June, which give, would give them a June check and also a check to use towards July expenses.
Cause they don't get paid the month of the month.
Because they, they won't get a check until the end of August.
It's all, it's all based on their contract. Their contract typically starts around August the first and runs through, through June, well, through May or June. And to be able to get that twelfth check out of this year's appropriation, that's the reason you have to write this one like that.
And they have to be cut in June to make sure that they go on this year's
They have to come out of this year's funding, but if not, they would get their tenth check in May, and they wouldn't get another check until the end of August.
Some of them makes it, it makes it, sometimes they'll hard on three checks.
So, that would be a long haul. So I think the eleventh and twelfth check really helps them go into July and work towards their August check.
There's a way to fix it, but it's, would be astronomical for the first year to make it work. Cause everything that would be paid on that twelfth check would have to be accrued as a liability to be paid out in July.
Well, and in the past, there was actually the option between a ten check or twelve check payout. And like, we might have had one or two that were ten months. It was overwhelmingly selected as twelve payouts.
So we took the, the ten payouts, that option several years ago.
Okay. I think we've already done enough astronomical for one budget.
We really have. Give us another year.
Well, we gotta, can I, we gotta go through an accounting software change too this fall too, so.
Okay. Um, so I, anybody have any more questions for Tina?
One more thing. So with things that are federal funds, if we're below expenditures on that, do we lose that, or does that roll over also?
Okay, so some of the funds can only carry fifteen percent. There's very few that are ending that cannot be carried over, but the, the typical ones, we can carry fifteen percent. Um IDA can carry a, a little bit more than that. So unless it's one of those grants or funds that's gonna end, that's over, typically we can carry over.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but federal funds still typically run a fifteen-month cycle, correct?
Yes, they can go into September.
So technically, this year's Title I doesn't technically close until September, and at that point you create the carryover, which rolls into the twenty-five, twenty-six allocation to, and then it establishes another fifteen months. It's a, it's a continual fifteen-month moving, moving target.
Anything else?
Deal with head start, it's a whole different animal.
All right, item fifteen, public comment. John?
Just real quick, I, you know me, I like to make things short and sweet. I just wanted to congratulate Old Ed and Holly on their appointments. Uh just want you to know, you know, we, it, the role you guys play is extremely important, and you know, there's gonna be times when it's gonna be tough, and there's gonna be a lot of people out there saying things. Just know that the, the, the loudness of the few is typically not the sentiment of, of the many. Um not everybody um likes to get out there and, and have shouting matches with their thumbs on social media. But just, you know, you got, it's very important, and uh what you guys do is extremely important, and uh we're just glad to have you. And uh the last time this went down, I said a quick little prayer, and I'd like to do it again if that's all right. So I'm just thinking about it. Heavenly Father, uh it's us again, and we would just like to ask for your, your guiding hand and your wisdom uh for the new board members as well as our existing board members, and as they go through and we start working towards a new year with the school system, for the kids and everything. This last year was uh, was a little rough, um but with you and as a community, we all made it through. And you know, if we can do that, we can do anything. Our world is changing at a seemingly breakneck pace. Um there's so much going on that we just can't even seem to get a grasp of any of it. But we just know that as long as we stay in you and allow you to guide us, um that we will be just fine. So just as we move forward, please be with us, and it's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Thanks, sir.
In your uh packet, you had all kinds of informational items. You do have the board meeting schedule for twenty-five, twenty-six. Always the second Thursday of the month. Uh there is one change because we will be at T S B A in November on the second Thursday. So I talked to Kevin, we moved it a week ahead, so it will be the, the week before. Uh just a few little um informational things. I've already introduced Gavin, so Gavin, we look forward to having you, I represent the students. We did have a hurricane relief funding meeting today. We had um some parents, some teachers, some administrators. And this is the, the donations that we received from several organizations right during the hurricane to, to help our students. And it's been sitting in an account at Farmer State Bank. We have not touched it, uh done anything, and uh met with the committee today. And one of the things we would like to do, and we will put this out, is to get school supplies for all of our students. That way parents will not have to buy school supplies next year. And uh they were definitely in, they loved that idea. They had several great ideas of ways to maybe help spend that money down, and so it was a great meeting, but uh parents, you will not have to buy school supplies for this school year, and we'll get that information out so parents will know, because they'll probably start buying soon. So we're gonna have those provided for everybody.
What's your rule?
She was a part of our group today. Thank you to all of our summer school workers. Next week is the last week of our required summer school, so we appreciate all they've done and dedicated in their summer. Um I do want to say um thank you, Mountain City Elementary, for hosting us today. Uh want to welcome Holly and Ed. I know you'll make a great, great uh board members, and we look forward to working with you because you do truly care about our students, and that's what it's about. I also want to introduce our new middle school assistant principal. Uh Mark Fleener is with us tonight. Um he comes to us from Unacooy County Schools. He lives in Johnson City, and he'll be working at the middle school with, with Michelle Arnie, and I think they're gonna make a great team, and he's, um if you have a second, go back there and say hi to him. July board meeting, we will be at Rome Creek Elementary.
Okay.
But we've not been there. That's the only school we've not been at. Be the last one, and we will be in the library, but I'll send y'all a reminder out. And just want to say, happy summer.
We haven't done this in a while, but we'll start down our head. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just again appreciate the opportunity. Uh if you ever need anything or any questions for me, just feel free to call, email. I don't do Facebook, so I'm sorry. I just don't have an account.
Wise choice.
Okay. Holly?
Same thing. I'm available. You can find me if you can't. Make sure you find me.
Jay?
I'd like to echo on what Mister Long said um at the work session. I hope the people you care about and you love, cancer is a brutal, brutal disease. They can take any of us at any time. Don't take anything for granted. Cherish every moment you have with the people you love. You just hold, hold them close to you.
Kevin?
I'll echo uh welcoming both Ed and Holly to the board. I think they're gonna be a great addition. I think we're gonna be very unified in what we do for the next school year because we all have one thing in, one thing in, that we're passionate about, and that's kids. And taking care of our kids and our staff, and I can't stress that enough.
That's true.
And I will say, and I'll, John may touched on this, you will learn, social media is not your friend. That'll be one of the first things they'll tell you when you go to orientation, and T S B A, social media is not your friend.
That's true. All right. Uh thank Mountain City for letting us come down here and enjoy your building. Thank you for supper. I already ate, but I'll take it home. And gave us our little summer pack to go home with.
Thank you.
And thank y'all for coming out. Has anybody got anything else? There's nothing further. Further, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion adjourn.
Second. We're adjourned.